BSU budget. Meeting. We see any members of the public that need to comment? Don't see or hear anybody, so I guess we should move to. Budget issues assessment.
Sure, so the. The information. Ray had submitted some some documentation memos to the board. About assessments and. How they are generated. So it was at the last budget meeting that I think the consensus was for me to try to put the scenarios together that he had asked for. So that's what I have been working on the last couple of days. We met yesterday. To review the draft. Graphs that I had put together. There were some clarifications made. And based on that, it's the updated information that we. Sent out last night and has been posted with the with the agenda today too.
Scott McInerney is joining the meeting.
They keep popping up on my screen too. So. This is a lot of data that I I've put together and I know. Some for some people, you know, they like to dig right into it. Other people, they just like, no, I don't. I don't need to see this level of detail. So. I tried to summarize everything on this first page. Of the document. So version one would essentially be the assessments. Without any changes to the methodology. So the methodology has been in the past that. For operating actually for all districts, things such as administration, finance, those costs for those departments. It assessed by a proportion of equalized pupil to all member districts. For those. Districts were at, you know, the time the only one district that was non-operating. There were certain things that got pulled out because they're not operating a school. Such as ELL, English Language Learning or Curriculum. So we would pull those equalized pupil figures out and then regenerate the proportions. And assess those out to the operating districts. And then items such as audit and special education, we track those costs specifically by district. So those are applied or assessed out to the district specifically by. Cost with the offsetting revenues. So what you have here is version one is the total of the actual. Net assessments that would be going into the local budgets for Arlington, Mount Anthony, North Bennington, Sandgate and the Union Elementary School District. So this is not the total of, you know, the SVSU budget that was approved a couple of weeks ago. This is less all the offsetting revenues that we have. Version two takes into account. The one scenario. Of changing the assessment. For early education, early essential education, or what we refer to as special education for those students that are of pre-K age. And the preschool or pre-K assessments. Those were or have been in the past assessed out by. A weighted average. Weighted two-year average of students in early ed, special education and pre-K. Along with a four-year weighted average of. ADM from students that are in kindergarten, first grade, second grade and third grade. I suspect that the rationale behind that was to provide some stability. So from year to year, there would be less potential fluctuation. But the proposal is to strip back having those additional students or additional weights factored in and just look solely at the number of students that are in special education. At the early ed level and pre-K at that level. So that is version two and what the changes look like. So version three kind of leaves the early ed piece out of it and looks at the proposal for changing how the administrative services. Were assessed. And. This is essentially taking all of the segments of the North Bennington assessments excluding admin, excluding. Local pairs, because of course we don't have any in the SU budget and then special education services. And then applying that as a proportion to all of. The assessments across the board. So we'll take a closer look at that. So you can see what those numbers look like. So that's version three. And then what version four is is actually a combination of two and three together. I've lost everybody. You know, it's it's a lot of a lot of data. Are there any questions? I mean, this, this is, you know, kind of what what I do, and I know it's not what everybody else does. So I don't want to bury people with information. I just, I want to be helpful. For people to understand that, you know, the variations and I can show you the the detail of what the difference is or what's driving the differences.
Yeah.
I don't know what what suits everybody's.
I got a question back for two. When you was going through version two, you indicated that we have two-year average and then you have four-year. Out there. Something about a four-year.
So, okay, so in version one, we. That is basically using the same methodology as has been used in multiple years going back, which is awaited average of special education for early ed. Pre-K and grades K, one, two and three.
So all weighted averages.
Yes. And so those would be two years of averages of essentially students ranging in age from three years of three up to third grade. What version two is doing.
Weighted.
Weighted, yeah.
See to that, which is that in the pre-K area, these are point four-one.
Four-six.
Values. And for kindergarten through third, there. Theoretically, there's one, but they're actually about point nine.
That was my next thought. I was gonna get to Ray. You got it. I was just hitting and trying to make sure.
So the the weighted average is not the ADM. It derives from the ADM, but it derives there from that. Given different weights for different age children.
So what the proposal is is to strip out. The weighting and just take the actual ADM count. Now ADM is the average daily membership and what that comes from is the fall census every year. There's a window from day eleven to day thirty of school, twenty-day window where we count students and it gets reported to the state. That's what we refer to as average daily membership. That data gets sent to the Agency of Education statewide. They then, you know, we review the data, they apply the weights to it. There's, like we said, the the weighting for our early ed students is a point four-six or K. It's elementary, yeah. Elementary age is considered a one and then I think it's a one-point-one-four for secondary. And additional weights are added for students living in poverty, students that English is a second language. So that all gets compiled together and equalize pupils. And that data kind of gets massaged through the course of the winter through the agency and has been the data that has been used to to generate these assessments.
So going back to two again, there is no. Breakdown or percentage of for the triple E or the pre-K, they all equal in terms of a one account of one. Is that right with an average of two years ADM?
Well, ADM, they've just one, yes.
Yeah, they're saying just one, but I'm saying they're listed in their virgin double E, triple E and KE assessments based on that. But that. Actual base is keeping all them equal thing before it was when Ray mentioned earlier, I'm like, when it was in the different levels of pre-K, they were getting a different percentage of terms of account.
Right.
And so that was.
It, yeah.
Yeah. So that's no longer the case in two now.
Correct. It's it's strictly on. Enrolled pupil. Basically. Okay. Now, if Ford's, correct me if I'm wrong about this, Renee, but I think for. By talk dropping the the K through three group out. It wouldn't matter whether you were using the enrolled pupil or the weighted average there because it was in the same.
As long as it's apples to apples.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
But because those kids, I don't think they get. The waiting for poverty and so forth.
To me.
Do they?
I think they do across the board. I I don't know how Brad James does his calculations for equalized pupils, but I I would think that it's. You know, all all the students. But again, I don't, I don't know. I don't generate that that data. I just take it from.
Well. Yeah. My point has been that budget budget-wise, they're they're basically equivalent of students. In the in the program. Particularly when you're talking about. Children having triple E.
So how can we then, I mean, I'm saying the statewide in terms of our accounting, this is not just Bennington's. Way of counting and figure the kids up. You talk about a point four and a certain amount and so forth along that line. Is that statewide or that's just? How we. Do that here when it came to.
It's how it's been done historically.
In this county, in this SU. So if I were to go, I mean, if the state was looking and said, well, you know, we don't, everybody don't do it like that. That's what I'm.
It has to be in in some form of student population. So whether it's ADM, direct ADM, I know that that some SUs, some school districts use. ADM, some use equalized people proportions.
Right, yeah.
It's just what with the board decides as to how they want to apply that to to the data.
So my my bottom line question that I was trying to get in there, I didn't want, I wanted to make sure that we didn't get in. To the various levels of of education where the state is seeing. The need to do something for a particular level of kids based on need. And that's where, and now we're saying we're going to take that all out. Into if that's what I got it. We're saying we're gonna take all of that out. Everybody is going to be the same, a same count. And and be assessed for the same value. Is that? Going to get us in any trouble with it coming around to somebody says, well, you know. I mean, we're we're counting on it right now, but we need more money for. Kids in this area. If money, more money can be acquired that way. Are we gonna have to break that out another day that way on?
Uh, no.
Yeah.
What I say, but.
The whole weighting and the whole equalized pupil. Has been under evaluation. Like there was a study that the Agency of Education retained the University of Vermont to do. So the legislature is going to be looking at maybe after this whole system.
Okay.
But I think as long as as we're consistent and we're making sure that we're not, you know, skewing the numbers one way or the other. So we're as long as we're consistent and using whether it's ADM, equalized people. And I think the way that, you know, that Ray has proposed it. I I don't see a problem with it. Like we, we continue to use equalized pupil proportions for most of the assessments, but we're just carving out this one piece of early education, which applies only to our elementary school districts. Or those that are operating a pre-K to twelve. But so what I have on the screen here, just to to point out, so this is all of the FY twenty-two ADM, FY twenty-one ADM, and then the averages. What's in the shaded area. Are the averages with the weights and then how those proportions end up calculating out. And that is how version one was assessed. Okay, so the pink. Is. For triple E, pre-K, both being weighted at a point four-six. Grades K to three. So it's the two-year average of all of that data for all of the applicable districts. The the blue area, a little bit gray. Is the same data, but without Arlington and Sandgate's numbers in there. And the reason I did that was because their costs. Were their early education program, just their like pre-K or preschool is at their local budget. So they don't have any cost in the SU. So it wouldn't make sense for them to have to pay an assessment for that cost because they already have it built into their local budgets. So the cost for pre-K would continue to be split just between the SVU, ESD and North Bennington. So this is how. You know, it it would be for this year. In version two, looking at that same data, we've stripped away. The K through three. And we've also stripped away the weighting. And you can see the shift in percentages. So that's where the the variation comes in.
Jay will let me know that she had to leave the meeting.
Oh, Jim just. So what may. The the version two, I mean, version four become a combination of.
We haven't gotten to three yet.
Oh, okay. Well.
No, so so I I think, I mean, Ray, again, this means your proposal, so please, you know, feel free to chime in, but it's kind of two, two things he was asking for, you know, the the assessment. To be reevaluated. For early education, pre-K, and then the other piece on the admin side. So just the version, version one shows you how it would have been. Version two is with Ray's proposal to shift. To ADM for actual. Early, early essential education for triple E.
A little bit of that. So then sort of version three scenario and what that often administrative service assessments, not the. Long outline, taking that out, excluding administrative service or specially services applied to administrative assistance. Service assessment, so. Time to make sure I understand how that is going to work.
So what we did. We looked at. What the assessments were. I don't know if this is big enough. So we're looking at row twelve here for North Bennington. So we added. The financial services. Assessment, the audit, HR admin. Everything across in row twelve except for the figures in column B, which is the administrative services assessment, which is what we're looking to adjust. And then O. Which is our special education costs and those are assessed directly. Based on actual costs. So we took everything else in that line and added it together. And came up with the three hundred and fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty-one dollars. So that is North Bennington's total assessments exclusive of administration and special education.
Didn't include the general education as a. You didn't.
We, no, because there's no value there either. For North Bennington.
Yeah, but in the fourth one, we do want drop it out.
Or the for the denominator of.
Yes, for the denominator.
So when we look at. We're looking across at row twelve, so that that's the adding of all of the assessments and the total of that is down here in row twenty-two. So that is the total of all North Bennington assessments excluding admin and. And special ed. The areas that are in pink on these sheets are, there wouldn't be any assessments to those school districts because in most cases, they're the non-operating districts. So again, as I mentioned earlier. There's no assessment for curriculum because they don't operate schools. There's no assessment for English Language Learning because the school districts don't operate schools. And so on and so forth. So that's why those areas are shaded and red because there's there's no cost associated for. Those costs at the SC level.
And so then you get to see a going across those, there's no HR services out there for. North Bennington and would be Sandgate area, no HR safety and security services. I want to try to make sure.
Because they're, they don't operate a school. They don't.
They are no operating school is the reason they out.
Yeah.
The HR, there is a a portion of the HR budget that's there and also a portion of the tech budget that is there for the administration. So there is still. A a portion of those budgets that are being assessed to those non-operating districts. But again, because they don't have employees. And they don't operate schools that require tech services, but they are paying a portion for tech because of, well, what used to be a pretty substantial cost at the SU level for our accounting software. We have a cost associated with our student data information system. We have costs associated with, you know, Zoom that we're running tonight. So. Those districts are sharing in those costs.
So that portion that says on administrative services is is enough. I mean, takes up what's needed for those items, what you're saying. Okay. I. I think I got that now. And then going down and again, Sandgate in in the Sandgate doesn't operate. Transportation.
They actually do, and that's why they do have an assessment for transportation. They they do all the bus. They do transport their students to their schools.
Okay.
But mainly, I think most of them go to Arlington.
Everybody makes their own to North Bennington. Along that line of transportation, everybody that's looked at, so.
That's all, yeah. All the all the families in North Bennington have to provide their own transportation.
Okay. Then let's understand the general aid. I know that hits Arlington only. That's not, I mean, it Arlington comes out for general aid. I don't really understand.
So a few years ago, I think during negotiations, the Education Support Personnel Collective Bargaining Unit. We had paraeducators that were. Serving special education. And so those those paras were employed by the SU. But then we also had paras that were part of that same bargaining unit that were employed by. The elementary school districts and because they were serving mainly kindergarten classrooms. So they were general education, not special education. So because they're not special ed. We we track them separately. We know who they are. We know which which buildings they work in. But a few years ago, the decision was made to to take their employment from the local districts and move it to the SU.
Right. And that's why I was, also all of that, again, is covered. On the issue from somewhere.
So then the general education, so that's column M. And these are our quote-unquote local paras. So they're not special education paras. These would be, again, are folks that are in. Either kindergarten classrooms or depending upon the school, we have like learner support centers. So those would be the staff that's there, but they're now employed by the supervisory union. So. We've separated them out as well again because we're tracking them specifically on where they're working.
So that's now that column, what came out of that is out of the general ADM went into O. Is I got that that way?
These are all separate. So the the costs. For our general education paras in the SU. So we only have them at the SVU, ESD and at Mount Anthony. So that's why there's only those two that are actually paying. We have one paraeducator at the high school. And the rest of them are all in the Southwest Vermont Union Elementary Schools. So that's why it's at, you know, eight hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. At the SVU, ESD level and then the one para at the high school. In Arlington, all of their local pairs are still employed by the Arlington School District. They're not at the SC level, so that's why they're not.
So that's why they're not there.
But they do have special education paras that are part of the SU. So those are actually factored into their special education.
Oh, yeah.
Assessment.
Nobody has own point, but the.
My point has traditionally, yes, just served as an elementary program, an elementary special education program. So that is why it is paid for in full by the Union Elementary School District. And that may change going forward, you know, as as the SU is growing. But as of, you know, this point, it's all been students of that Union Elementary School District that have been there.
And so the high school has no early education because it's high school, no school. And so then it takes me to R over here for the.
Pre-K.
The pre-K these year. In.
So we pulled out Arlington and Sandgate because they're carrying the costs for their students in their local budget, similar to how they are with their local pairs.
Okay. And then Mount Anthony don't have anything in there either, so. Okay, I think I I got the understanding for what's happening there now in two and three and one.
So what we did for for version three, we we took the North Bennington assessment and then we're basically comparing that to. The totals. So the totals from row sixteen. But not taking into account the totals for. Admin. Or general education. Or special education. So looking across at row sixteen. Without those columns.
And you're talking about the denominator.
Denominator, yeah, it comes to eight point five million dollars and change there. So Ray, Ray, I don't know, you may may speak to it more eloquently as to what your rationale was for kind of looking at it this way.
No, like. Taking general education, the bottom line there of assessment, point, point nine million. Special education at five point two million. Out. I, my rationale was that basically they're. They're at a remove from direct supervision by the superintendent. They're supervised by people in field in schools. And. They're billed directly on actual costs to districts. And their their personnel that are. That that was my rationale. Basically, you know, the it's being billed directly to the district and it's not directly supervised. Because there's intermediate layers. So so their. Paras being supervised by teachers that they work with and by special ed or other teachers in the case of those who were not in in there as special ed. Paris. And then onward up the chain, which is overall seen overseen by the superintendent, but not directly, you know, every day dated in oversight.
So there's not a lack of service or anything. It's just being done a different way. Is basically what you're saying. Whatever the kids, what's. Is basically what you're, you're saying, whatever the kids, what's, whatever is required, it's supposed to be done, is being managed a different way than what.
Yeah, and uh, the net effect of this, it increases. If, if, if that were in the denominator, it would drop our percentage of the administrative costs. And I, I didn't think it was right because of the kind of a remote location, remote with respect to actual supervision services.
Yeah, okay.
So. We took um, the North Bennington assessments, the three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, dividing that by the overall um, total assessments with those exclusions, the four point two three percent. And that's what the proportion is. So if we put, applied that to the administrative total of the one point one eight six million, it comes to fifty thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars. In version one, um, by using what was the um, just this, the equalized pupil proportion of all districts together. The assessment was fifty-two thousand, so it's saving uh, potentially North Bennington nineteen hundred and fifty-one dollars. So that center section there kind of summarizes um, what, what the differences are and how the savings for North Bennington then get added to the other districts proportionately. And I did, um, I think Ray, when we met yesterday, I hadn't carried those numbers up in the upper portion, but I did in, in these now. So those, those are up above.
Yep, I figured you cleaned everything up.
Okay, well, the difference between that is nineteen fifty, fifty-one. And it's the day of my birth.
Well, we thought about that.
Yeah, you know about that, is that the way you made these numbers come out this way?
Not really.
So then, so that, that's version three, so that doesn't take into it, you know, into account any of the, the early education, um, special education or pre-K um, from version two. What version four is, is a combination of the two. So essentially it's both, but you can see um, the, the proportion changes. Um, it, it drops for North Bennington, so therefore their administration um, cost drops by seventy-six, twenty. And then that has to be picked up by the other member districts, and so I've included those costs there. So what you're seeing, again, on that front page, um, is just kind of a summary of each of those, so just taking those lines across, you can see them all together comparatively.
What we've now lined up with seven thousand, six hundred and twenty bucks that goes to other.
Of the, of the administration, yes, and then costs for early ed. Um, I'm sorry, early essential education, which is the special education portion, also shift from because we're counting just the actual students from the census, from ADM, the two-year average. Um, and that is, again, because Hank Arlington or um, North Bennington has two.
So um, since we're on version four, I would point out that in column two, so that distribution of those costs between SVU ESD and North Bennington uh, for the numbers of students means that each student is an equivalent cost. Then exactly equal in fact, within rounding errors at least.
When you say column two, that's B you're talking about.
Q.
Q.
Oh, Q, you were.
Yeah.
Right, and column, column R, which is the early ed program, pre-K and general, uh, the same is true. Um, where if you look at the earlier scenarios, um, at the one, version one, and
version one and three would be the same.
Those, that number for early ed, uh, pre-K program is, is not, those are not equal between the two. In terms of spending for.
So you'll also notice too that because the early ed portions of columns Q and R are the same in, in versions one and three.
Right.
Um, by stripping away the averaging of the K through three and just looking at what the actual ADM is for um, the early essential education. For the past two years, Arlington and Sandgate have not had any students. So therefore that is why you see their assessments go to zero in versions two and four for this early education, special education. So by doing it this way, you know, you, you could see an influx, you know, in, in any given year of, you know, a handful of kids, which, you know, could be a, a significant impact to a budget. But, you know, to, to Ray's point, he's, you know, wanting it to be spread out evenly over the actual students that are being serviced.
So for instance, for impact, our budget for this, the current fiscal year for triple E services is ninety-one thousand. And uh, though at the census time, apparently we had two students, right now we have one student. Uh, so there's considered, and even at two students, that's uh, forty-five thousand dollars per student in the program. And uh, whereas I don't on this calculation, but uh, the calculation for SVU ESD would be in the range between twelve and fifteen thousand per student. It's a big program.
So now that we look at the, those proposals, that both the changes that moves and changes out there, like, put the two of them together and to make version four, that's, that's the, that's the final version of what we need to be okaying that would make everything whole in terms of how it's being used and assessed and so forth. Out there and making it equal for, for all the, the districts that are involved that are required to do those things.
That's the idea, the idea is to, I mean, most of the change is in this, these last two columns, Q and R.
Yeah.
And um, and R, our assessment goes up in this final version. It's two hundred and fifteen thousand as opposed to one seventy-five and uh, on version one.
Yeah.
And uh, on the triple E, the uh, that, said for early education, it goes down. But in both cases, the cost per pupil is, per enrolled pupil is the same for, within that program for both districts.
Yeah, I understand now, so the, what's the, I mean, I don't know, what's the next thing, I, I mean, the beauty, you're running a thing, it's just a version four, I'm saying, okay, I, I understand it myself. And I'm saying, I don't have any more questions personally about what's happening. I understand everything and so forth, and it, it meets what I understood the need to be, how it should be done along that line. So I don't know what anybody else is having there.
I have one other remark about that.
Okay.
Uh. I think uh, it's important to realize that year over year, what you're going to be doing is starting from a basis of equal per pupil spending between the two districts. Now, it may not end up that way because you may drop a student or you may get students you didn't have or didn't anticipate having. And the, the reason we have to do it this way, budget this way, is we don't know who's coming. Uh, child find is out there discovering children, but it's incomplete until enrollment actually occurs, right? As I understand it, they're, they're looking and I, I knew, the person who used to do that task be one of the people doing that task. And uh, so there's a lot of discovery involved, but uh, every year there are children come who you didn't expect, that's on lead because they've moved. So that, it's impossible to come up with the actual number, which is what you're really shooting for. You'd like to have it be equal expense for the actual students you have, but you can't predict it. And uh, this is the closest thing to making it a little bit so error, I think, as far as I can tell. Now, if, it's possible that we could run it a different way with the, the ADMs, but uh, you know, this, this works, it's relatively easy to factor, figure out the equality point. So I, whereas if, I, I don't know what the weighting is for children in this group. Theoretically, they, they would be weighted, but I'm not sure in this program, which is a special ed program, essentially it seems to me deficits or whatever the deficits are. And they, the program is constructed to try to deal with all those deficits. Individualized it may be, once they discover what the child needs, but uh, the program is budgeted and constructed based on uh, a need to provide services. And uh, there are all sorts of services available, some of them are contracted, some of them are direct. And uh, you, you work to help each individual child. But in terms of the cost, it's, it's basically distributed on us, or it should be, it seems to me, basically on equal bases.
So the blueprint has been, I, I mean, I'm laying out for, for four to be there and uh, if, if something happened in the next two or three years and you want to say, okay, I need it to have something happen, all you have to do is go to this layout and says, we now need to acquire or want to acquire services under that particular column. And that won't be a problem because you can just, in my, looking at this, you just go ahead and add that particular thing in there as agreed far by North, uh, North, North Bennington or Sandgate or Arlington. To do that, is that a fair way of saying that?
Well, I'm not, I don't know about uh, the, the points where this would be relevant, I think, or on point. And um, the other, that's, that's basically it, I think. Uh, because, you know, that's for emotional disturbance and we don't have access to that program. Apparently because we don't have school, I'm not sure that's a legal position that's uh, tenable, but we've left it that way. And uh, if we have a child that needs that service, we'll work to figure it out then.
Well, that's what I'm saying, this, 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 the blueprint here is, is out and everybody's looking at it and said, okay, this is, we count it equally now for ADM and so forth along this line, and we land them out. You've gotten uh, the areas that are, are being managed a different way in the, in that district and, and the same thing, either Arlington or Sandgate, and so that's, that's not a problem. So laying it out this way, uh, it, it's going to continue this way unless and somebody require a different service, but not a different type of breakdown in terms of numbers and counts. We're saying, we're going to not do uh, break it out for point this and point that. We're going to go by an average of, of ADM count. And uh, for these particular categories, and this is the way it's going to be, that's what you're asking to say, do.
I have two questions.
Yep.
Um, first one is um, if we went before, that's a change from what you've been doing so far, how does that affect whatever systems you're using, whatever um, labor time, I don't know. What, how does it affect your, how the administrative systems work?
Um, it, it's doable, it's just, it's different, so it's going to take more time because it's, and the ADM is definitely easy, right?
Until it gets up, then.
It's the, the shift and then, and the administrative cost is going to be a little bit difficult, just because it's, you know, having to parse things out a little bit more and spread it out and then come back and figure it and re-figure everybody else's.
Well, that sort of answered my question.
Yeah, so, I mean, basically it's a fairly simple calculation once you have the spreadsheet set up.
Change the rules of the game a little bit.
Yeah, to get it done.
Yeah, we can do it however the board decides, it's just, we just need to, to know what, what the consensus is and that's what we'll, we'll go with until, at, until the point in the time when somebody decides that they want to have it looked at and changed again.
My other question goes to uh, Arlington folks, um, we haven't heard any comments from Arlington. I know Matthew's there and uh, Bill Basic.
I don't have any concerns at this time.
I think you're probably going to want to play it out one more year, you may be doing this again next year, um, as we run the full budget, but it looks, you know, pretty good to myself. I, I'd agree with Bill on that, I think it's going to, particularly uh, Q and, and R, but mostly Q is going to require review annually for a bit until we see how it works. And, you know, it may be that we want to run a scenario with using just the weighted, weighted two-year average of students as well. And then I ask for that because that seems, it seems really intuitively that it's easier to deal with individual children as a whole and not figure them as equalized pupils. The, the thing that you should not be confused about is those weights for those children, if they, they have them above that alter the point four six to some other number, are still in your budget. And they're still allowing you to, allowing you to tax appropriately to pay those expenses.
Renee, uh, this is Scott.
Oh, yeah, Scott.
Is um, are, are, are you, are you fairly certain in the air, in the columns that now have zero dollars in them that once, once had dollars in them, that there are in fact no services being provided to, you know, when, if I think of curriculum?
Right, we, we don't receive any curriculum services.
Yeah, because there, the, those two um, school districts don't actually operate schools. So we don't have a, so the, the supervisory union doesn't have a say in those children's curriculum that is being taught to them unless they're opting to go to one of the schools that is one of the public schools within the SU.
Mm-hmm, and I, I, I could further expand on that just briefly. Uh, if we have twenty-one students, twenty or twenty-one students going to SVU ESD schools currently, most of them to Shastbury, but um, also uh, Molly and Benell. And um, the, those, those children, of course, And um, the, those, those children, of course, if they need, if they need special services, uh, special education or E L L, uh, our district pays for those services in addition to the tuition charge that S D U E S D uh, requests of us and we pay. So uh, yeah, that's important to realize.
We have other comments. Uh, Scott, you're still, oh. Anyone else like input on this? So do I need a motion to subscribe to version four, the assessment?
I would think so. I, I'll make the, the motion because uh, what we, based on all of the scenarios and everything that we've gone through, and then looking at version four is what makes it much more equal for the services that are provided. So I'd like to um, make the, the motion to accept the, the uh, formulation, we use the word in terms of how we uh, determine uh, the assessment in the S V S U to follow version four. And I don't know whether that's the right, right motion or how to cover everything, but that's really what I wanted to say without having to go to all those things.
For fiscal twenty-three?
Physical twenty-three or until uh, do we say and you want to, so we, well, we're going to have a review anyway. Each day, each year you, you go over things just to see what they all are. So I won't put a years out there in terms of saying, let's look at it again because uh, everybody's going to look at how, what they got and what it is based on this form. So the calculations is what I'm saying and how this process is laid out is how I would like this, the motion to, to carry to be able to start processing the information and, and, and dealing out accordingly.
Yeah, I think we could style it as uh, F Y twenty-three fiscal assessment uh, uh, schema. And uh, I would, I would second it.
All right, so we have a motion from Leon and second from Ray. There's discussion?
Yeah, one thing I'd like to say is I, I think Renee did a very logical way job of going through this. Yeah, Boris, I appreciate that.
What's the total of the monies that are going to be distributed to the other districts?
Well, so if you look to the front page, one is seeing his place to see it. So it, we're, it's the difference between the version one number for.
Renee, could you put that back up?
I guess it's that difference and version four.
Yeah, that's what it is. The difference between one and four.
But what I, I do have a question. You know, why is it that S V U E S D starts at eight, eight point six and ends at eight point eight million? Or that's because of the transfer on the triple E?
Correct.
Right.
Yeah.
For the most part, that's, that's where it is because if you look at um, uh, version three, you see that the transfer and administrative costs is very, very small now. It's, it's all in the triple E for that.
Oh, that answers your question, Frank.
Well, I, I just did the math. It's the forty-eight thousand two ninety. Am I correct?
Yeah, that's, that's correct, yes. And uh, most of that is triple E.
Renee, what does that do for, I know that the, I don't see anybody here from the Union Elementary Board, right? There's no one.
Scott and Dick are.
Oh, Dick, sorry. But what does that do? Cause we know that their budget is up almost seven percent. So what? And I know you calculated that on the original um, on version one. So any idea what that transfers to?
Uh, it, it'll be just under a percent probably because it's, you know, I, I haven't looked at it since yesterday.
Just under a percent more.
Two hundred thousand dollars, yeah.
Yeah. So they'll be close to an eight percent budget proposal.
Yeah, I didn't, didn't let that cat out of the bag yesterday.
Yeah, well, I just did. But it's real money. I mean, that, I mean, that's the proposed budget.
I don't see why it's so much.
Right.
Triple E. Cause our, our stair only goes down like eighty thousand.
Yeah, it's because it pulls Arlington and Sandgate out of the mix because they don't, they have zeros in for their A D M.
So all was missing was just a column to see what the difference was. We can do the math itself.
Yeah.
Talking about showing that, if that's what you're asking is how this is to be shown, well, that this is the meeting that we are actually showing it and going through it with everybody as opposed to having uh, some other way of, of doing it.
Jackie Kelly?
Uh, Jackie?
Yes, I, I'd like you to put back up the, the one where you uh, defunded certain schools at the chart where, I guess it's a matrix. Not, not the total amounts, but where you subtracted monies from each category.
Oh, okay. Here. It is online. Oh, no, it's not. Happens when I share my screen.
Right, so.
This is, this is just the administrative piece, Jackie. What I was trying to do actually, well, you guys were talking, I was going to pull up that, that first spreadsheet and throw a, a quick total on it for everybody.
Right, well, it, it's good enough for, for what I'm going to point out, but so if we vacated money from where you have these peach um, highlights and, and for certain, for two schools, um, and, and then uh, Ray was saying how uh, their students uh, go to other schools, uh, then do those other schools then take the money that was vacated and is it added to their uh, total? So for instance, if um, Ray said, I think he had twenty-one students uh, that go to other schools, uh, Benell, et cetera. So uh, instead of putting it all in the S B E whatever, um, wouldn't it go to, for instance, um, or I guess all of those schools are the same then, right? They're all under the S B. They're all under the elementary, so it would be the, the common pile, correct?
For the early education, special education and pre-K, yes. For the administrative change, no. Because the administrative costs, um, which actually I neglected to point out. I did add this in just to give you an idea that that category includes not just the superintendent's office, but it's the treasurer, board of education costs, legal expenses, executive administration, which would be the superintendent's office, and then central office facility operation.
That's in B.
That's what a column B includes.
Right, but, but for, for, for instance, for, for a child that's an E L L, so there's no money, you know, in, in all these peach areas. Uh, but say the, the child goes from Sandgate to uh, uh, Fisher. I, I believe it's Fisher, correct? And, and so um, would that money then be uh, uh, transferred over to Fisher School? Or would the cost be, not the money, would the cost be transferred over to Fisher School?
We're really, we're looking at this as kind of a snapshot in time, right? So it, as things change throughout the year, we don't go back and make adjustments. This is like what we know at this point in time. So this is what we have to base it on. Um, if that student were to stay enrolled in Fisher the following year, um, I mean, Fisher's, Arlington School District is paying a portion of, of that, those services anyway. So that's where the student's going to school because it's a public school. If they opted to go to a private school, we would have to evaluate the needs of that student. And then if services were required, that school district would end up paying. So we would either send them a bill or do a special assessment.
Okay, so I, I think I understand you now. So not, not the total bill then is going to the S V U E S D. Uh, some of it is paid for out of the Arlington District, correct?
If you, yes, if you're looking at E L L for, for instance, yes, that, the cost for those teachers, which we added a second teaching position um, based on the, the student population that we anticipate coming in for next year um, with that need. Um, they range, I think, in ages. So it's, it's going to be um, not just an elementary cost, but we will have kids in the secondary as well. And then if they do end up going to any of the Arlington schools, um, we'll have services there as well.
Right, so the, the bottom line that you had up before this, it really, uh, it, it doesn't reflect that. It, it, or does it reflect that?
It is breaking the cost, the S U costs out proportionately based on equalized people for the operating districts.
Right, right, but it doesn't take into account the, the children who were sent to other districts, correct?
It doesn't show their revenue is what you're asking, is it?
Because that's the, what, what Jackie is asking, I think, what Bruce, whatever each one of the individual district that we sent, North Bennington is sending students to Ben, uh, to Benell, uh, Shastberry. Shastberry sends a bill to North Bennington. But not this calculation here is what we're trying to say. That's what Jackie's saying, the same thing.
It, that, they, they receive tuition money from either Sandgate in the case of children going to Fisher from Sandgate or from North Bennington in the case of children going to Shastberry, uh, Benell, um, Molly Stark, whatever, uh, within the S D U S D. And we pay, the tuition that we pay is um, what's, there's only one thing that's really outside that. That's the transportation cost, right? Is not in that tuition bill.
I only look at it annually. No, I mean, it, there's a, a number of pieces that come out.
Yeah, but they're very small. They're not, you know, building projects are included and uh, all the expenses of uh, you know, everything that is on this spreadsheet of cost that gets distributed to uh, operating school district gets factored in, factored in, I can say, pretty much factored into that bill. If there's a special ed expense, then that special ed expense is passed on to the sending district. Right, that's what, uh, I think that's what.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is, but um, I guess. Right, it, it is what I said, but um, I'm, I, I look at, I looked at that spreadsheet, the total spreadsheet and it's, it looked like all the monies that were taken out of Sandgate and North Bennington were uh, added to the uh, S, help me with those acronyms.
S V U E S D, yeah.
Yeah, uh, so is that correct? Am I, is my thinking correct on that?
Well, Mount Anthony's.
Mount Anthony also.
Yeah, my name is.
Just, just on the administrative piece, the other part of it is, is related to early education and that doesn't get applied to Mount Anthony because it's just a secondary um, school district.
So Jackie, that's why it looks disproportionately like that more got shifted to the Union Elementary School Districts because they have triple E and Mount Anthony does not.
Right, so, so um, would, if, if the uh, non-operating districts would have a triple E person, uh, student, uh, would that money then go to the uh, of the district?
We pay that money directly through this assessment, right?
That's what, it, I, yeah, that's what, what I'm saying. The money is paid directly from that, that district for that person somewhere else.
The sending district is, you know, uh, which includes everybody in this case with triple E is a sending district for it. Uh, you pay, you pay the money for the child services directly to the S U to where the, who runs the program.
Fran, I have totals here. So the difference between.
You gotta shift that column over, yeah.
So the difference between version one and version four. The Arlington assessment goes down a hundred and forty-eight thousand. Mount Anthony's goes up thirty-eight hundred. Or Bennington goes down forty-eight thousand. Sandgate down almost sixteen thousand. And then S V U E S D goes up over two hundred.
Right, and all, and all I, I was commenting on was the distribution of funds where it went. But I think you clarified that and thank you very much.
So that's all because they don't have any children in the, in the triple E program.
Correct.
Whereas you were distributing costs to them without having children in the other versions, which I think is well, to me clearly unfair.
So do we have further discussion on this? Don't see any hands appearing. So we have a motion on the floor to uh, direct fiscal year twenty-three assessment to go by version four. Do we have that correct?
Yeah.
And uh, Leon made a motion, Ray seconded. All those in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah.
We have one, a abstention. And motion carries.
Thank you, Ian. Yeah, Ray, if me, I'll tell you that, I'm understanding.
No, she made it pretty clear.
Pretty clear.
I kept reading those emails and reading.
I'd like to, to move that.
I just think it, uh, it's, it's well done and um, I appreciate that she did it this way.
So move the bed down.
I don't have the agenda in front of me. Do we have anything else on that?
There's nothing else, isn't there?
Yeah, yes, I, I'd like to move that we uh, uh, close the meeting.
I'll second it.
All right, we have motion from Jackie, second from Leon, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.